For the time at 6:30 PM, I will now call it White Springs, Breala Town Hall Council Meeting. Well, we could at least have the invitation in front of us.
Dear Reverend Paul, we're coming for you once again today and we praise you and we magnify your name. But this is the day that you have made and we're obligated to rejoice and we're glad in it. We thank you for this year, people who are here, the community of White Springs, Florida, the Town Council and the staff of the town of White Springs. God, we ask that you will take us to higher heights and deeper depths in you, that your glory will be revealed even in us and the things that we do. We thank you and we praise you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have the roll call of the council? Vice Mayor Nina Rivers?
Here.
Councilwoman Pizzi Burke?
Here.
Councilwoman Joya Watson?
Here.
Mayor Williams, here. We have a forum, so we can proceed. Are there any additions, additions and or amendments to the current agenda? Okay, so that means we go with the agenda as written. Now please have a motion to approve the minutes from the July 11 22th whole workshop, July 11 Town Council meeting and July the 2nd, I'm sorry, June 11th workshop, June 11 Town Council meeting and July the 2nd emergency meeting.
Hi, Nina Rivers, I make a motion to approve the minutes for June 11th, June workshop on 11th meeting and July 2nd emergency meeting.
Now please have a second.
Pizzi Burke sent the motion.
Any discussion? Call in favor? Any opposedes? It's passed by the unanimous vote. Then we please have the financial report by Mr. Luther Powell.
I have it down, lady. We'll page handout, it's somewhere around on the table. Everyone have a line to write. Okay, it's a pleasure as always to deliver the monthly, our financial report. So this is, the town has two funds. The first is the general fund, which is on page one. At this point, we are two-thirds of the way through fiscal year, which is about 68%. So the revenue for general fund is $690,858, which is 69% of the budget, so you're fine. The expenditures, and as I mentioned early on, the more the year goes through, the more accurate it becomes. On page two at the bottom, your expenditures are $575,239, which has excess revenue of expenditure of $115,618. So your expenditures are about 62% of the budget, where they could have been 67%. So general fund is adhering well to budget. The next page, page three, is the enterprise fund. And here, the revenues are $446,585, about 68% of the budget, so again, a little bit more than the 67%, so that's good. The line items are various. And on page four at the bottom, the total expenses are $323,593, which are only about 55% of the budget, so you're still tracking well on expenses. So any questions on the financial report?
Is any council person have a question for Mr. Powell?
No.
No, Mr. Powell, if not, thank you as always.
I have one action item that I'd like to ask the council. We're entering into budget season now. And so there are the two approvals we would like. And the first one is the maximum millage rate, which the current millage rate is six mils. So that we're requesting that the six mils be the millage rate. Again, I'll mention, you'll have two public hearings. And at each hearing, you could adjust downward the rate but not up. So one item we'd like is six mils for the millage rate. And then the tram law requires two public hearings. We have to coordinate with the county and the school board. So we are proposing the first hearing be on Thursday, September 5 at 6:00 PM. We'll run an ad on the 18th and have the final hearing on Monday, September 23rd at 6:00 PM.
And that's the final budget, the 23rd?
Obviously, we afford the fiscal year.
September 5th and September 23rd. Councilmembers, you've heard what Mr. Powell is proposing. So may I have a motion to do the millage rate for the maximum of six mils and for the tram meeting for the first reading be September 5th and the second September 23rd will be the final, both times the same together. So moved. Round the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposedes?
For information, Vanessa and I have started working on the budget. We intend to have a workshop, which is before the public hearing sometime in August when it gets ready. And we'll request that through the online.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Thank you.
Do I say?
Yes.
I would like a reference to reflect that Mr. Randolph, please, is present for Minnesota. Hey, administrative department reports, Town Manager Vanessa George and Town Clerk Ms. Hunter Lawrence.
Okay, um, we may have to dim the lights, but I can't see naturally. It's so we're out of the building, so it took this each report so long. We don't have enough pages. So we have to, that's why the light, we gotta turn off if we want to see.
Right. Is that the light switch right there?
That's clear. Cause up here on the screen, it's low. Okay. Gonna focus in. If I make it smaller, then we can see. No, we cannot. So. Just too close to that wall. To this wall. So that's blurred. Come in here.
Do a little more.
A little more. It's doing. Well, y'all gonna feel like to go to your emails. Everybody gonna have to log into their emails and follow along. But we really do need to see this, cause one of them is 52 pages. I don't see.
Let's see what the picture looks like.
Will it be on the website?
You can ask for a public records request or anything. A lot of things we're not going to put on the website, because we have the information. But if you request it, I'll make sure you get a copy.
How much is the cost for 52 pages?
Whatever the cost is, what I've given you before, 20 cent is double sided. 15 cent is single sided. Prices have not changed.
That's proposed statute law. I can't see, really, you gotta see the release, that's why.
That's wrong.
So do you like an airplane to the TV?
Now, I don't know, but all that. You talk about airplanes to the TV. If we can cast on television, I can cast. If the, but I don't know there's wifi to cast. That's a cast, that's this. I can cast, is there a wifi from here?
Yes. It must be on the same wifi.
What is it, is it public?
Is it what?
The wifi.
Okay, let's just try it. What's her name? She in here?
Uh huh, she in.
Don't she leave it over here?
I did it one time.
What's she in?
I only use it.
I can't see.
She only use it one. Take your glasses off.
Tell her he can live on that. Okay, so let's see if I can't.
Have you ever used, you usually.
I used it one time.
She's like, why is she calling?
Nah, I can go ahead while you sit.
Yeah, she can go ahead.
The only thing I did want them to see it, but I can't explain it in that way. You wanted to worry about these particular two. As you see on your agendas here at 6:00. A and under A, the two here, the anonymous letter and the anonymous fax. And I do have those for any public records requests if you can't get it up here today. Being former law enforcement, federal, state, local, my antennas go up real quick when it comes to things that are suspect. So we're getting a lot of hate letters, a lot of hate mail. It's not about fear for me, because I'm not afraid. But I just want to make sure that a lot of this stuff is mentioned in a meeting such as this. The anonymous letter that we received, again, anything that I'm talking about, I can make sure you get a copy of it. It's talking about killing women and children and all this other kind of stuff. But hopefully we'll get this up so you can see it. But again, you can get it. I won't go into detail, cause it's kind of grossed out. The other thing is that anonymous, the anonymous fax is what was sent to us concerning that, the hate mail about women, killing women and where their bodies were buried and that kind of thing. The anonymous letter was sent to, I really don't even know. Did anyone get an anonymous letter? Did the council get an anonymous letter? I don't know who.
I do. I got one in the mail.
Did you get one as well? So I'm not sure. Can I, I see that, well, anyway, okay. So we've got an anonymous letter that is talking about a particular citizen who is, well, she is actually a non-citizen, who is out to get us, so to speak. But again, that particular letter, is that your request? If you want a copy of what was sent to Town Hall? Mine is not, because I'm gonna keep mine and that's mine. You all are not gonna put y'all's in the, it's gonna just be the letter that came directly to Town Hall. So I want you to know, when you think it's excessive, when we have security in our meetings, but it's very, very serious. The climate in our country is at an all-time high. And we can't just take things for granted. And I was, because I was like, hey, you know, I'm a, I carry a weapon daily. And I think most of us here are registered to hold a weapon. But who wants to even kill a person for being stupid, you know? But I, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows what's going on tonight. Our security, who we hire at times, could not come because they could not bring their weapons in here. And I understand that totally. And tonight, the officer that is representing Hamilton County Sheriff's Office is here. But we need people to be warned. This is why, we don't do this stuff just to be doing it. And I, for one, am not gonna take anything else for granted. Mayor Williams, at security and peace within our town hall, we've got to make sure that all of our staff, and that's one of the things Vanessa, as the town manager has mentioned. And I kind of laughed it off in the beginning, but I'm not laughing at it, you know, anymore. And again, last thing, if you want a copy of this letter or a copy of the fax, just request it through telephone. Write it down in here today, if you want, whatever it is you need, we'll make sure that you get it.
And that's it. And with the FMIT assets, I'm gonna have to ask that you go to your emails. Because this is 52 pages long, we need to hurry to get it done. But I, do you have a paper copy?
Uh, no, I left it because you had a projected copy.
No problem.
What was it on here?
FMIT.
Assets.
Did it come from you or Audrey?
Vanessa sent it to her, but she sent it to you guys.
I'm sorry, is it from there?
I don't have it. Y'all just not looking at the.
It's probably on the something.
It's asset reviews, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, 61724.
617. But that's just.
If not, I just have to put.
Oh, here it is, asset reviews, 6 June 17.
So, okay.
Did you all find it?
Let me know if you already got it back in church.
Did you find it right now?
It's on June 17.
June 17.
Okay, so. Everybody got it?
Did you all commit to the wifi library?
It's downloading, so I have it.
Yeah, what y'all, go to the library?
I was asking them what they put their library, wifi's put to the.
Oh, I'm actually not, it's just on this.
No, I'm talking about get them on their phones, if not, go fast.
Well. Our insurance, so every five years, they ask for you to renew the assets and look over so you can see what you have and what you need to take off the insurance. So Ray is the only, what else? So we was like, okay, the guy said, well, I can come and help you out, cause I understand that y'all only have three people and I can come out from FMIT and we can assess the town's assets, so we can determine your insurance. Well, when they came out, they found out that most, most of the things are not even insured, like the fire department, not for the amount that it should be. So our insurance went from $25,000 a year to $50,000 a year. So they asked us to go through this and find out what we would like to take off the insurance. Now Audrey and I have went through this and there are some things that we can take off to get this insurance bill down. I'll say keep the liability on the property, but some of these things, if they tear up, they get destroyed in a hurricane, or not, don't need to be replaced, be insured, cause the deductible may be more. So right now, we have the water storage, the first one, that's in the veterans park.
Water tower.
The water tower. We even talked about trying to get that torn down, but it's a couple hundred thousand to get it torn down. The limit is $58,000, that's how much we have it insured for. FMIT said it is worth $450,000. That's what we should have there adjusted the bill. Okay.
So is that something we have to keep insurance on?
I think we should just keep liability, but we're not gonna replace this, because we don't even use these water towers.
Right.
So that will be one. That I, that, that's one that Audrey and I looked at and said that that should be taken off.
Alright, so water tower, which is liable.
Uh huh, that's on page 51.
Alright.
The second one is that veterans building behind it.
Not there. Um, we don't use it.
No, there's no limit on it, it's not insured. And replacement cost is $181,500. I think, yeah, we think that should be taken off.
Will we use it this once a year?
We never use it.
It was just storage and.
They had antiques or something in there and then we had surplus sale and it's nothing.
And what are they saying it's worth?
$181,500. Adjusted the building is $181,500. That's the veterans building in the park. Okay, on page three is the fire department. They have that at $75,000 and FMIT saying the replacement cost for that is $1.1 million.
Well, that definitely has to be insured.
Yes. There's no way we would restore that baby to $75,000. So we definitely need to leave that.
That's page three. But it has to go up, right? Cause it wasn't.
Oh, it's going up, cause it wasn't insured, yeah.
Right, okay.
So the next one will be, this is called the lift station. Is this the master, it's not the master lift station? So this lift station is on 41. This is the master lift station. The lift station, we got it at $30,000. It's gonna cost $300,000 to replace. That's the insurance, yes. And for those who are not familiar with the lift station, that's how you get all the sewer at your house. That's one lift station. Okay, also, we have this generator for $25,000. This is the new generator that we got with that last grant. It is, the replacement cost is $100,000. So it's not, it's not insured for, not even half of its value.
All of the lift stations and generators.
Yeah, it has to come up, it have to come up. So yeah, some of this we can just, yeah, the next one is a generator, I'm gonna skip. And it's at 35, and it's $181,000. This one is a, okay. The community center, we did wanna restore that eventually, but the value for that is $187,500. The replacement cost is $737,500. That's for the community center. Okay, we got.
Amphitheater.
The amphitheater.
No, that's just liable.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's not even covered and it's $54,000 replacement cost, but it's not insured right now. And I think we should just keep it that way and keep liability. I'm sorry. No, uh huh. This is behind the community center. Okay, these are the bathrooms behind the community center. They're not insured either, but the replacement cost of those bathrooms are $40,000. Yeah. Next will be the.
Town Hall.
Oh, Town Hall itself, which is $400,000, but the replacement is $604,000. We'll get the Town Hall, because Town Hall is another animal in itself that we'll discuss. So it's insured, though, because, you know, inflation over the last five years, so that's why a lot of these counts are just so much different. Okay, the pole barn, $32,000. The replacement cost is $291,000, which I disagree with. For this, what y'all call it, pole barn or?
Pole barn.
Yeah, I, I don't see us insuring that for $300,000.
It needs to be insured, because he has his equipment under there.
The equipment is gonna be insured, cause we gonna go to.
Okay.
But I just don't see us replacing this for $300,000.
No.
And if you look at the asset notes, let's just, let me go back to that. That's the open bay, 480 square feet of wood side enclosed storage bay area. Roll, steel rolling bay door. The building is 40 by 70. It's 2800 square feet. Terminally used as built. So yeah. Replacement cost value is based upon data available at the time of survey. Okay. It does say, if members aware of additional specialized equipment that may justify the scheduled value of this location, please advise. So we can probably give them a price on a brand new little building that's cheaper. Okay, here is the generator at Town Hall.
It has to be insured.
That's, oh yeah, it's, it's on, the limit is 25 and the replacement is 35. Page 14 is the automatic entrance to the door. It's not insured, but it's a $9,000 replacement value. I don't know if this has to be insured, I just need to call and find out how much it is to replace it, if it got it.
Got the company.
Cause it's $9,000. The old jail. The current building limit is $100,000. They wanna replace it for $170,000.
We're gonna do just liability on that one?
I say liability on just that one. That was my suggestion. Okay, we have the new water plant building. That's at $100,000. Replacement cost is $310,000.
Remember when we get done that someone did call about purchasing that building? So we need to discuss that again, how we can go about putting that out there for bids or whatever.
Okay. The tank, the elevated water, water storage on 135. The current building limit is $287,500. FMI replacement cost is $750,000.
You know that has to be insured.
It does.
Absolutely.
The other one is the generator out there at the water plant. And this $25,000, the current value is $57,000. Y'all want fresh water? This is also the water plant, the pump station. It's not even insured and the replacement value is $250,000.
It has to be insured.
Okay, the groundwater storage is not insured. The replacement value is $500,000. Those little water tanks out there.
This is crazy.
Okay, the well. The above ground well on 135 is not insured. The replacement cost is $90,000. This is the well that get the water out of Ryan.
Ryan.
That's what's in those little things out there. Okay, the second one, same thing, not insured, we got two of those. The sewer plant, $75,000, replacement value $216,000. Okay, this is, oh, this is that sewer plant.
All the buildings and everything, sewer plant and water plants have to be insured.
That's the, that's the lift station. Yeah, it's need to be adjusted to $6,000 for 25. Water treatment, that's the sewer plant. The plant itself is not even insured, it's 1.1, over 1.1. That's the sewer plant.
We can bypass the generators and.
Okay, well, now we have the signs. So we have the welcome sign, they got it at 56, the replacement cost is 22, that's lower. We got insured for more than what it's worth. The other sign is 17, the replacement cost is 5, we can go with that. Stop signs, we got 35 stop signs, they got us a six at $100,625. That's the replacement cost. Now I say take these stop signs off, because they've been tearing up the stop signs anyway. So we've been buying one stop sign at a time. The only way we're gonna be able to do it, if we do all the stop signs, which is $100,000. So the deductible is cheaper, I mean, it's more than purchasing the one stop sign when they tear it up.
Right.
But these are the historical stop signs, the little fancy stop signs that we have. And they do, they are expensive to put up. And they do, they are expensive to put up. And, you know, you're putting them back up. Okay, signal post, thirty-seven thousand, could not identify. We have a picture of that. We're almost done. We're on page thirty-two. The sign in front of town hall, six hundred and twenty-five. I don't even know if we even insured that. Okay, these are our lights, uh, various locations, street lights on forty-one, the historical area. Uh, one point, is that one point two?
Yes, it does. That was through a grant from DOT.
Yeah, for, uh, it's a hundred and seventeen of them?
I don't believe that, no.
It said, as they wanted to, one seventeen.
They go close.
Well, we got a couple of them down anyway, so we, like I said, it's a couple of them down right now here. But I wish you could tell you, it's like twenty-two or something like that crazy to replace them. So, we just gonna, um, somebody hit the one right here in front of the library. Get them to keep going, but they don't realize the cost of time. Okay, this was on thirty-two. Okay, lift station, not even insured. It's a hundred thousand.
That's crazy.
Um, at the water plant, the above ground valve, not insured, a hundred thousand. Kendrick Street, not insured, a hundred and ten thousand. I'm going fast. Jackson Street Lift Station, a hundred and ten thousand, not insured. Uh, Jewel Street Lift Station, a hundred and ten, not insured. The boat ramp, not insured, fifty-five thousand.
Now, what do we need, what do we need insurance on that?
I mean, give it to them. Y'all gonna replace it? I say liability. Okay, the handicap deck out there is by wood. It's not insured. It's twenty-seven thousand.
Where is that?
Boat ramp.
The boat ramp.
Okay, yeah, I mean.
Okay, the pavilion under there is not insured, twenty-six five, excuse me, twenty-six, two thousand five, excuse me, probably two hundred and fifty.
The pavilion, this is, uh...
The boat ramp. Restrooms at the ball field, not insured, forty-eight thousand. Okay, concession stand at the ball field, not insured, sixty thousand. That's, I think that's a, that's... Tennis courts, seventeen thousand, not insured. At its memorial, the lights out there on the field, not insured, two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Restrooms at Turner Park, not insured, twenty-eight thousand. The basketball court, not insured, nineteen thousand.
Did they have them insured? Did they have liability on any of them?
Uh, I gotta check with the liability, because we're supposed to go to restrooms. We definitely want liability on everything, but that's why it went up, because nothing was insured. Like, if they got something that wasn't insured. On the playground at the park, not insured, forty thousand. But they may have said, we just gonna do liability on it. We not gonna insure it. Just like probably saying some things we're not gonna do, so that's, that may be why. There's no insurance on the playground equipment. The pavilion at the, um, park, twenty-eight five, not insured. Okay, page fifty-nine, forty-nine. The boardwalk at Brown Park, not insured, a hundred and fifty-one nine. I think that need to be liability.
That just need to be liability. They can't even go there. It's a swamp.
It's a swamp. Okay, how y'all say it, Amagley?
Amagley.
Amagley Park, not insured, twenty-nine six. Not insured. Uh, where is this? Hampton Street. Oh, this is...
That's the pavilions at the, um, Amagley Park.
Okay, it's two. Not insured, fifty-seven, two.
That's it.
And that's it. Yeah, yeah.
Now, who gave those, um, you know, rates for the insurance or...
Yeah, it's okay. Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, FMIT, who we have out, Florida League of Cities, FMIT.
Now, if you got an independent, uh, praiser to go out there and do the ones that you wanna get insured, I think you probably come up with some different favors.
Well, FMIT is the one that does the town's insurance, but that's why they're asking, do we wanna insure all of these things? Because some of these things don't necessarily have to be insured.
Well, I agree with you.
Yeah, so that's why we're proposing to the council to find out what they wanna keep insured or what they want to insure. Um, like the lift stations, they, they definitely need to be insured. Because when y'all have sewer backing up in y'all house, a lot of people will leave town. But, um, other than that, like the veterans building, um, the old jail, things that we don't use, definitely need to... I, I think it need to come off. Yes, just liability.
Um, I'd like to make a suggestion. Vanessa, could you, the things that you want liability, um, that you're thinking liability, go ahead and make it separate? And then the things that are insured, and then make a proposal like that? Because to go back to fifty-two pages again, then we can have like a special meeting, if you would like, uh, emergency meeting, whatever you would like to do.
Okay, well, definitely, especially because you've been waiting on us to get this, okay?
That'd be the quicker way to do it.
Okay.
Make your proposal, what you feel like should be liability, and then let the council then decide. Because to just bombard us with fifty-two pages tonight, I think we can make a decision.
No, 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 not tonight. I gave it to everybody before, before night.
I understand.
Okay, yeah.
But now we're hearing what your ideas are as a town manager.
Alrighty. Okay, so now, what's next?
Air quality.
Yeah, the air quality inspection.
Let me piggyback on what we just talked about, um, in talking, um, with FMIT. They were looking for something tonight, which I told you probably wouldn't. We need to get an answer on what it is we needed to do. But there is a deadline, so I'll find out when you have to have an emergency meeting.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Uh...
Air quality.
Oh, the air quality report. Um, now she have that as well, the air quality report. That's lengthy as well. So, I, I'm just trying to sum it up. So, basically, I, I agree to take this one because she met with several people several times.
Okay, um, as you see here, this, the air quality control inspection report. This is not done just out of this blue sky, so to speak, but we had been noticing last year that, um, every one of the staff people in the office allergies just escalated once we got in the building. And I can remember some years ago when we initiated the same process at the city of Lake City. So, I called, um, an air quality control company to come in and inspect the town.
First off, the carpet. Got the carpet.
Well, I think the carpet came clean first. But, um, again, called, um, for an air quality control inspector to come out of Jacksonville. And he did come. He did an assessment. Did a few days later and immediately he called back and say, the, um, what he found was somewhat alarming for the size of our town hall building. Um, the mold that was in, um, the areas of the building was excessive in the conference room, which was the most recent we constructed part of town hall. So, the first thing he said that you have to do, he said, it sounds like it's gonna be a lot of money, of course, a lot of people are gonna say that. But he was saying that because of all of the photos, again, we have all of this in a report, um, council had seen it. I look at pictures quicker than I read it because I understand what he's saying. But the, um, the mold exposure is very excessive and very high. He mentioned to us, he said, I heard you say you'll see us tomorrow. He said, but you all do not need to come back in this building. So, considering that we have to do what it is that we do, we're only going to town hall for a couple of hours. We've done a lot to, um, make sure that the town is running in terms of making sure we, um, get all the calls. Our phone system is really acting up the first day, but we do have that. But the air quality control inspection report is available. We want to, uh, request, uh, public records request for that. And, um, hopefully, it's another long conversation about what we're going to move into temporarily. And that's another conversation, but that is where we are. We do have that report and it is not good and we will not be in there very, uh, extended time. He mentioned two hours max. If you all had to come to this office, do not be in there, um, after two hours. So, that's where we are. Again, you can do a request for this report. It is done. And we did make sure our council got it last week. So, that's where we are.
Question, do you have specialty masks to protect the employees there?
I can't, I'm not permitted to hear that.
If you'd like to be speak, you have to be recognized and then you'll come up to the podium when I, when I say yes, okay? Yes. And please stay tuned.
It's your own call, and, um, I was wondering if you had some kind of safety mask? Because you could be there two hours, but, you know, I think that's excessive if they said it's bad. But if you had safety masks, because y'all gonna have to move stuff in and out too. Is there any way you can do that to protect the people that have to go in and out, you guys?
Actually, um, since I am a nurse, I did instruct them to wear A ninety-five mask.
Okay.
Um, and that is what is conducive for a mold exposure to wear.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the concern.
And, um, going back in, we did have an emergency meeting. We saw that the minutes there, they are on the website. But that is why we had the emergency meeting, because we had closed town hall and because of this. And we're looking at a portable, um, unit to come in and house staff temporarily. So, we hope to have town hall back up hundred percent probably the next ten days max. And that's it for me.
Town manager, we not being back off of anything about regarding...
Yeah, just go ahead and reiterate what I just said. We've already, um, um, Mayor Williams already approved us to get the mold building. It will be housed at town hall, so we won't have to, you know, worry about the location. We'll be housed there. Um, we will be seeing people in to pay their bills and, and take care of things. We will be limited, so if you are asking for requests and we have to go into the building, um, it's gonna take a little bit longer because I'm not gonna have the people in there for a long period of time. Um, actually, um, Mayor Williams told us don't even go into that off in two hours, even with the mask. Because, you know, sometimes saliva get wet. She said, definitely take that off. So, um, they're, they're gonna still handle your requests, but you just have to be patient. Like, right now, it's very difficult for us to get any request out because that mean we have to go into the building, go into the office, go look through the files. We're gonna try to move out, um, some of the things that we get requests for often. We'll have the medicine stuff with us, um, and the mobile site. But it's a, it's a, it's a mobile signal wire, like trailer that you see on construction sites. So, we not gonna have access to everything. We gonna have a front end now so we can conceal new business. And, um, that's pretty much it.
The, um, new building system that was transferred.
Yeah, it's the same system, but it's just transferred. That's another thing too. So, um, with the bills, it took a minute because we, our system is arcaded. So, it's on a particular computer. It's not with the cloud. You can't go from, just log in. You have to actually have it on your computer. Um, we asked when we were going into that building, can we get it like that? But because of our meters, we cannot. Nobody has the meters that we have anymore. We still have the ones that you have to read, so... Which we were working on a grant for that, to update those.
Thank you, ma'am. So, public works the rating of report, um, the twenty-three, um, annual drinking water quality report?
Yes, that is, um, something that is on the website. Um, we do have a community citizen that had a question that doing our forum with comments. And he'll do that, but again, that is on the, um, website.
So, we have the old presentations and then the citizens from the forum.
Yes, yes. If there are any more, please bring your, um, names up so you can be recognized. I have Mr. Warren.
Mr. John Warren, he come up, please take her.
Thank you for your... Um, my question was, I saw the report. And some of the dates, uh, on the testing went way back as, the latest date was in twenty-one. And the amount of testing that was done, it looked like it was basically chlorine and a couple of phosphates. There are many, many more problems with, with today's, uh, country. You have pesticides, herbicides, you have runoff, uh, fertilizers. You have a great big mine up there. And I didn't see anything referring to that. Or also our pipe system, our drinking water pipes are made of some, are made out of a material that has been outlawed since nineteen seventy-two, I believe. It's a, a vessel stressist, you know? And, um, so, why so little testing? When, uh, I moved here about four years ago, my last well test I did in Georgia cost me about fifty bucks. And it was much more comprehensive than that little tiny test that looked like. The only test that's done monthly is chlorine. You think that would be done at least weekly, if not a day. I mean, you require people who have, you know, community pools, they're required to test every single day. We're talking about ingesting this stuff going through pipes that have been outlawed since nineteen seventy. And I have yet to hear of, now this is, I haven't heard of a replacement pipe system or even a grant for it.
I can address, I can address. So, um, as far as the testing go, let me go. Ray has take, has to take samples every day to Lake City, water samples. He can take the samples there, they test them, and that's when you get the results back.
Now, what is he testing for?
Oh, I don't know exactly.
That would be a Ray question.
I have to pull it, I can pull it up and we can also...
And the D P requirement.
It's a D P requirement that we do the water testing. Now, when you talk about the, um, lab, the, uh, asbestos pipes, there's not enough in there to cause any danger. Now, most small towns...
Oh, excuse me.
It's not enough, the, the quantity is not enough.
We don't know that.
D P has told us this. D P, they actually just came out. D P came out and told us that. They said that most cities gonna have old pipes in there. Because if the government don't give you any money, you cannot. That's millions of dollars. So, it's not like we can say, hey, we need a couple billion dollars and you gonna replace them. We replaced some pipes when they did bridge streaking and did all that. So, we have a grant out there now where we're trying to do the meters and they're gonna do some of the piping, but it's not gonna be in its entirety. A lot of grants also have where you have to match. Now, when the citizens are saying something about the water bill going up and the rates, we have these water loans that we have. The government rarely gives you a hundred percent. You have a certain percentage. And when I got here to town, I already had three or four loans already out there. There's one that's, uh, twelve thousand every quarter. So, this is coming from you all. So, these are the things that a lot of people don't realize that you have to pay for these things. The government is not just handing out, oh, this is White Springs. And another thing, too, people are not saying this is White Springs, the population ain't hundred. We gonna give them a discount of eighty thou, uh, eighty percent. Whatever the cost is, it may cost, if it costs three million a day, they're gonna charge you three million. They're not gonna say it's White Springs, it's charging thirty. They can't afford it.
I'm not listening.
So, no, no, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm saying that to say, we have to wait on the grants. We have to apply for the grants. We're applying for the grants. Some grants you can only do one at a time. Right now, we have a grant that's in play that we're trying to do. D P asked, they said, one thing they wanted them to improve, this was in two thousand nineteen before I got here. Um, they wanted them to, one of the things they have on that list was for them to redo the meters. Okay, just to do the meters, except that was three hundred thousand. The town of White Springs does not. So, we applied for a grant. But then you have certain people that's writing letters to the government that don't even live here saying all this kind of stuff about White Springs. So, guess what? They put that grant up whole. So, we've been fighting with them, telling them, hey, look at our, us, our, um, audits. Look at the records. Look at our, you know, talk to our C P A. Look at the records. Look at our, you know, talk to our CPA. The town of White Springs is doing good financially. We're finally on a good footing. So now today, Audrey, if I'm, today.
Yes, just.
Today, they said, okay, we're gonna go ahead with phase one and let the town of White Springs, in the only way I was able to say, listen, we have forty-one thousand dollars sitting over here in our funds that we did not touch. And that's the only reason why they're gonna go ahead with their planning stages for us to get the new meters and this grant that's gonna replace some of the pipe.
I'm more worried about asbestos. I personally use reverse osmosis to purify that water. And, but not everybody will use, I don't even know about reverse osmosis filter. The problem is asbestos causes cancer, as you know.
Yes, but it's nothing that we can do besides apply for the grants and, and ask for the funding. That's the only thing we can do.
See it on, as a, as a test, on, on that, on that water test.
Even, even, let's just say, even if we have it as a water test, we could, all we can do is apply to the government and then they only let you have so many grants at a time.
If you have it tested, make it public knowledge. People like me will go right to Tallahassee and let them.
That's good.
I need to test.
You can go to Tallahassee now. You can, you can speak with Ray and he can give you all the, the water results and they're gonna tell you exactly like they said. Oh, it's a minute amount. That's what they're saying. They're saying it's a minute amount. You can look at counties like Bakersfield County, Waldo, all of them have the same type of issues.
I'm not worried about.
I know you're not, but I'm just saying, these, uh, Florida is filled with a lot of small municipalities.
That's where you know it.
So, yeah, so they, they get this all the time. So they're gonna accept. It's certain things like the Food and Drug Administration accepts. It's certain things in there that they accept because they cannot afford to eliminate. But I'm, I, 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 I am, I'm with you with your concerns.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, make it public. It's pretty transparent about it.
Oh, yeah.
The, the report is on the, on the website.
No, that report, that's the report I looked at.
But that's being transparent. Everything we have is on the, on the website.
Then that report was.
But that is D E P required, that report.
Then you gotta go up there.
Okay, then I'll leave that up to you, sir.
You know, I came up here, you're in a lot of concern.
You are, but I'm just saying, you keep saying the same thing, like it's our fault that we have the asbestos pipe pipes. No, it's not our fault. They're here. D E P has offered, the, the state is aware of the asbestos pipes. When he does the qualitative reports, all of that is determined in that. So they know what we're dealing with.
Then make us know. Make your citizens know.
How do I make you know without a, the report?
With a comprehensive report.
Okay.
Where the dates, the date, no, look at the date on the report. You'll see some of the dates of the testing, the last date tested was in twenty-one.
It's gonna say it's twenty-three to December thirty-one, December thirty-first, this is all the way to the twenty-first.
I worked out all the results. Some of them, they, the last test was twenty-one.
Okay, the one, the water quality test, we're pleased to report that our drinking water meets all federal and state requirements. The town of White Springs routinely monitors the contaminants in your drinking water according to federal and state laws, rules, and regulations, except where indicated otherwise. The report is based on the results on our monitoring from the period of January first, twenty twenty-three to December third, first of twenty twenty-three. Data obtained before January first, twenty twenty-three and presented in this report are from the most recent tests done in accordance to the laws, rules, and regulations. Then they have the table of everything.
Okay.
You can also go to the D E P website and tell you exactly what is being tested.
And we are appealing to D E P, you know, we're trying to get new, new plumbing pipes.
Thank you.
Tay Dickerson?
I wanted to talk to everyone about the summer camp. I have one of my wood campers here and I wanted to give her a few minutes to just kind of share some of the things she learned.
What was her name?
She's about to tell your name and age right now.
My name is Kayla Johnson. I am ten years old. I go to all our kids' summer camp. I learned on the first week I was there, Detective Cody and, and Detective Rico were fire marshals. They find it where the fire started and where the fire ended. The second week was gardening week. We had fun because we planted sunflowers. We planted a lot of stuff. We ate water though, too. And then this week, we had culinary week, which is the best week because you get to eat. We ate yesterday. Miss Tawana let us decorate cake. And today, Chef Clarity had let, taught us how to prep, how to, how to wash, how to season and cook pork chops and chicken. Reason why, reason why we should have camp next year is so kids shouldn't just be laying around doing nothing, just not having fun. And they should learn new things and come to the camp. This time, this year while we have summer camp is so kids can learn new things. We can learn and we can grow, we can grow up with the camp. And we wouldn't be able to do all this without, I can't pronounce her name, somebody say Ms. Birch and Ms. Tay.
Awesome.
Oh, and we have Renes, and I got one. It's named Fluffy. Well, Kingston Fluffy Johnson. It's our parent.
Okay, um, and I just had her come in so that the community could see what the kids are learning so they know that it's a real program. You, you know what I'm saying? And that it's not a way to, and I'm sorry to break, it's not a way to fund the money. I would like to also let people know that I've been sacrificing my time Monday through Friday from nine to almost six P M for zero dollars. And I want the community to know that. Um, the only donation that we have received for the camp is the thousand dollars that the town of Precious gave us. We really appreciate it. Um, but the only reason why I'm bringing that up is because we've done this amazing program with basically nothing. There are no other summer camps that only have one thousand dollars and are providing a full-time summer camp program for children. And we're doing it. Um, I also bring this up because even though we are doing it and we're halfway done, we still need support. Our campers are at the end of their summer camp program. By the time the next town meeting comes, they'll be done. Um, so they have an end of camp celebration where we are still looking for donations. We're looking for donations for them to cook food for their parents. Um, for them to be able to showcase their skills to different volunteers and sponsors in the community. Um, so if anybody's interested in that, I'm here. And, um, even if somebody wants to know what we did or wants more information, I'm open and available. And, um, that's basically all I want to say.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Tay. Here we move on to Ovis, um, C B G approval list, Jordan and Associates, Spencer Rogers.
Evening. I know you guys ready, you guys ready to get this out of your head.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, I know that's a good news.
I have a question before you start. Do you have any names? Or should you know who they are?
Well, I bet you give, you should have them packed.
It should. It's in the, it's inside the package. It's in the projector that we can't put on the wall.
Yeah.
I made copies.
Spencer, you're awesome. She said you were awesome. She said you were the man.
Spencer, the man, baby.
That may not be enough, cop. Y'all might have to look. Um, Jordan Associates is the actual administrator on the project. Of course, we be in right here in y'all backyard because I've been doing the county's C B G and ship for the last fifteen years and I also do Jennings as well. So I've been in these parks for quite some time. I used to live in the county on my first tenure for Jacksonville in two thousand and ten. I actually started my own company. I actually worked for Jordan Associates, uh, right out of the gates until I broke out on my own in, uh, two thousand and eleven and, uh, started in touch with consulting group. So I've been around these parks and, um, I told Ronnie, I said, listen, you're using my contractors, you know? These are my people that I deal with. Here is ship program. I said, just, won't you just let me go ahead since I'm already here? You know, do your in the field stuff and let them do all the paperwork. I do all the in the field stuff during construction and monitor construction. And they said, yeah, why not? So that's how, that's kind of how I got involved with it. Um, they have eleven applicants to apply and only six of them, um, are eligible. If you look at the top, Mary Shakespeare, uh, Bobby Jean Richardson, Ola Patterson, Linda Hall, Linda Thomas, and Vivian Young. Now, the reason for the ineligible ability of the bottoms, you'll have to talk with Jeffrey on that, um, as to why. But, um, now these individual homeowners have, have signified that there is no conflict of interest with any of the, uh, council members here. So, um, I'd like you to take a minute to look over them. And if you are tend to, related to in any way, you're gonna have to abstain for voting on those individuals.
I have a question too. Like on the satisfaction, you got complete and then ship? Or you ship doing that part of those or?
Well, I came, I came to, I came to Jordan Associates to say this. I got some H H R P money, which is part of the hurricane money. I got a lot of that money. Uh, I've got about sixteen new construction houses on the county. Got six going in Jennings. So I'm trying to spread my wealth around the ship dollars. Um, and I told them that I would, I think I originally said I was only gonna give them two hundred thousand to go toward their C B G, but I also included Mr. Newsom.
Yes, yes.
But I had to pull those funds out because I'm doing him under just ship because he was, uh, over income for C B G.
Uh, but he's not over income for ship. So I went ahead and pulled him off the C B G list and I'm, he's actually.
You're already starting, yeah.
Um, so, uh, I ended up pulling him under, under ship property. Um, so just take a minute and look at the, at the, at the six that have been approved to move forward. They have been ranked and approved through your locally adopted housing assistance plan. Uh, there's guidelines in there that, that Jeffrey and Jordan Associates have, uh, worked through to ensure that they all comply. And they all do comply. And I'd like to move forward with, uh, approving this six.
I'm gonna have to abstain. If we can do one at a time.
Now, who are you abstaining for?
Vivian Young. I think you start first, you see. Let me ask you, they getting, are these repaired renovations or are they getting new, new?
I'm gonna, I'll let, I'll let Jeffrey know as soon as I walk. He gives me the list and this is when I start. I'll be walking them through the next couple of weeks, uh, doing a write-up and then, uh, Jeff will have the information. Based on primarily what I've seen, uh, as far as the applications, because I've had time to kind of thumb through, um, and the, and the age of the structures, um, I'm pretty positive there will all be, uh, new construction.
Oh, yes, awesome. Okay. So, um, we're gonna go, like you said, one at a time. I would be abstaining from Linda Hall. That is my first cousin by marriage.
And I'll be, Linda Hall is my first cousin. To keep it, to keep it easier on the minutes, let me, let me read out the short from number one.
Yes.
And then you announce at that time that you're abstaining on the calls up.
Yes.
These have to be citizens that live in White Springs, correct?
Correct.
Okay, one of those names you named don't live here. Haven't lived here in years. So I'm, I'm confused as how somebody.
The farmer is here, I guess, because.
She doesn't live here. She hasn't been living in that house in twenty years. My uncle been there twenty years and she's been in Lake City for twenty years.
She lives with her daughter. So I'm, I'm confused. She's keeping someone else that could possibly get a home, huh?
Right.
Because she has, she does not live in that house.
See, these are things that we need to know.
Right.
I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just felt like, wow, all of the people that need something done.
Yeah, listen, the first one.
All right, number one, Mary Shakespeare. Are there any conflicts of interest? Can you state your name and the conflict?
She's a bird. She's my aunt. Julie Watson, she's my aunt.
Do we still have three?
Mount emotion. Well, yeah, nomination is going to go for Mary Shakespeare to be, uh, approved for the home application information.
I need a river's approve Mary Shakespeare for, um, construction.
Mount a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. And then we do let the record flag. We do have two abstaining.
You're good, aren't you?
Yes, I got it.
Uh, Bobby Jean Richardson is your number two. Any conflict?
Mount a motion to accept Bobby Jean Richardson to, let me see the C B G funding.
I need a rivers. Make a motion to accept Bobby Richardson for construction.
Mount a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record flag, you let him vote.
Number three, we have Ola Patterson.
Mount who's have a motion to accept Ola Patterson.
Is there any conflict?
Who's a conflict?
She's my aunt. I make a motion that we approve Ola Patterson for construction.
Mount a second.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We do have, let the record flag. We have one extension. It's a bird.
Number four, we have Linda Hall. Are there any conflicts?
Yes. First cousin by marriage.
First cousin by blood. You got three, right?
Yeah, we got three.
Uh, so, um, um, can I get a motion to approve Linda Hall for construction?
I case a bird motion that will approve Linda Hall.
Make a second. I Julie Watson, second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Okay, top, number five, Thomas Linda, or Little Thomas. So I'm guessing there's some issues there that we need to further investigate.
I make a motion that we remove her from the list. She has had citizenship in White Springs in twenty years.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record flag, you let him vote to remove her from the list. And can we move the next person up?
They won't, maybe you will.
Thank you.
Will somebody else go?
Yes.
Uh, the last one is number six, Vivian Young.
I have to abstain. She's my aunt by marriage.
Now I make a, now I have a motion to accept Ms. Vivian Young for construction.
I case a bird motion that will accept Vivian Young for construction.
Mount a second.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Sure. Um, as I said, once we, uh, I'm gonna get to the contractor approvals here in a minute. Once we, uh, over the next couple of weeks, I'm gonna start walking these, these, uh, five houses now and, um, determine, you know, do a write-up on them, you know, look at the, uh, family size, determine the size of structure, we're gonna replace it and so on and so forth. And then I'll get those, um, uh, back to Jeffrey. That's part of the environmental review process. We go, we're gonna go through the phase two of the environmental review, which takes. Uh, so you're looking at probably another, being conservative, six, seven months. So we're looking at probably starting construction, uh, first year, which will be good anyway because the last couple of nights are holidays.
Yes.
I'll be around. So, um, just whenever you're out and about talking to your constituents, just let them know that, uh, of course, we'll let them know as well. Whenever we call and say that they're approved, um, you know, what to expect, uh, you know, we'll go ahead and tell them to start packing up the little hotbeds, you know? Things that take a while, that you get, just, you know, just don't go crazy with it. I don't want you to go crazy. Probably two weeks later, hey, we're done. Where, where can we stay? So, um, um, and, and like I said, we'll start, we'll start doing those walk-throughs here in a couple of weeks. Is there any question about homeowners?
Thank you so much.
One more there. Contractors.
Yes.
Uh, at the bottom, we have, uh, five contractors to, uh, submit for the, uh, uh, construction, um, to be, to bid on the project. Of course, this list is not, is not the, at any time, if, if a contractor approaches the city and wants to bid on it, they, they can until I have to go through this process as well, uh, which your housing assistance plan also, um, um, it also tells us.
Excuse me.
The, uh, housing assistance plan also has guidance in there as, as far as what the contractors must maintain insurance-wise, liability, and so on and so forth. So Grass Construction LLC. So, Grass Construction LLC, Johnson Johnson Roofing, and they're also a, uh, a roofing and construction. Uh, LNG General Services, they're a local guy, that's Greg Law. Emmy Perkins Construction, somewhat local, he's got a lot of, Randy Powell Construction, uh, he's out of, uh, Glen St. Mary. And all these individuals have, have passed qualification, uh, that's set forth in the housing assistance plan. But before we approve them, I need to request you guys to do a waiver. Uh, there in your, uh, housing assistance plan, it states that the contractor has to have, um, auto insurance supplied to them, or supplied to the city for approval. It's not gonna apply for this housing project because, you know, you have contractors that drive over their sales and you're talking about, you know, it's not. So, it's not like your normal, you know, them, them carrying, uh, city property in their vehicle or things of that nature is the reason for that, um, waiver of auto insurance. So, I'd like to get that waived, um, for the purpose of the CBG and the construction contractor doing the work.
May I have a motion on the floor to waive the auto insurance through CBG, um, grant?
I need a rivers make a motion to waive the auto insurance through CBG grant.
May I have a second?
I accuse a bird second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And with that being said, I'd like to take the contractor list as submitted.
Oh, yeah, this female-owned business?
Uh, Johnson Johnson, yes. Uh, let's see, Grass Construction is white as lightning. Johnson and Johnson is a, uh, female-owned business. LNG is not. Emmy Perkins is a, uh, minority-owned business and Randy Powell is not, so we've got, we've got.
A mester.
Yeah, true, yeah, we got a good plethora of everything, so.
Placenta.
May I please have a motion to approve the contractors as listed?
I need a rivers make a motion to approve the contractors as listed.
May I have a second?
I accuse a bird second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that's all I have, just keep in mind that if you do have any contractors that approach the city or bid, uh, just contact myself or Jeffrey and, uh, we'll get them a, a, uh, application to fill out qualification package and of course, we'll have to bring them back for you guys for approval as well, so. Uh, but it, it's not for the homeowners, it's closed, but for the contractors, it's never closed. I think we'll have to go through the personal process. But at this time, these will be the only five that can get on the projects once we start.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm still on the old business item, um, B. We have N F P S Diamond Plate, Brandon Stubbs, please come forward. This will be your binders that have this here.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the town council. Hopefully here before you, my name is Brandon Stubbs, I'm on the floor of professional services. And I'm here representing BDO management. Um, you saw it called, uh, a year ago, you were trying to do some land use and zoning changes, but town was not in favor of that, so we kinda went back and re, um, I guess, refigured out what we wanted to do as a, as a project and, uh, initially we came up with this subdivision, it's five lots, they're one point oh one acres each. All on existing furniture, um, Juliet, Pan, Diamond Street. Um, the land use and zoning allow for the one acre lots, um, we submitted an application to the town, uh, the town secured services through EDA Inc., um, which reviewed our application for persistency, we lost conference plan, land development regulations. The worship comments that were issued, uh, we addressed those comments, sent them back to the town and EDA Inc. And, uh, it's my understanding, everything has been satisfactory addressed. And it's not, we're just requesting approval of the plenary plan, so that we can move forward, um, with the final plan, so make that to the town of White Springs, um, for. Any other question, I'll get the answer.
I do, I have, I have a question. So, Vanessa, you got a question?
Yeah, I did look at the, um, revised, um, plan that, um, EDA sent you and did, I just wanna have it for the record that you all are gonna have your own will and your own settlement for each house, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just need that clear. Thank you.
That's it. What are you asking?
It's just.
They're single tenants.
Yeah, they're single tenants. Yeah, with their own will, settlement, they're not gonna be on the city at all.
May I have, may I please have a motion to approve for the subdivision plan approved for Diamond subdivision?
I need a rivers make a motion to approve the subdivision flat for Diamond.
May I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Uh, question, um, well, not really a question, just a discussion. So, when is your anticipated time to, like, start your basis on this project?
Well, this is a plenary plan, so I'll have to come back before the town for final plan approval. Uh, the final plan is permitted, it'll be recorded with the clerk of court. Once that's recorded, then we can start selling the lots, um, to be built, so. Realistically, the earliest I would think would be four months before anything could be sent for permit.
So, Vanessa, this is when they, um, actually, you're gonna sell the land and then they'll build on it, or you're gonna actually?
Uh, we are not builders, we're gonna sell to homeowners, we're gonna go on.
Okay, okay.
So, it'll be.
So, may I, uh, Vanessa, move, and second, so may I have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any, um, mention?
On a new business, item A, audit committee slash, um, set first meeting date, Councilor Randy Hopkins?
Yes, uh, I scheduled an audit, uh, committee meeting on the eighteenth here at the, uh, library at six thirty PM.
Seven eighteen at six thirty? All right, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
I'll contact those members for you too, because they're not here tonight, I'm sitting. Thank you, I'm sure. Item B, um, Mr. Attorney Leslie Jimmy Bart.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There was a request for proposal for town attorney. And I did submit my statement of qualifications along with my price proposal. Um, I would think that it's in your packets there. Um, I am. The projection, okay, okay, I'll give you.
It's in their emails, too, babe.
So, to give you a little bit of my background, I am from Jacksonville, born and raised there, my deep roots there, we're fifth generation Jacksonville neighbors. But my dad's side of the family's from Lake City. And he has recently even moved back to Lake City from Jacksonville. So, we are in, uh, Lake City pretty frequently now, visiting with him. I have over twenty-six years of legal experience. Um, even though my primary area of practice day-to-day is personal injury, representing plaintiffs. I have, um, an extensive career also in public service. And I started my career with legal services at greater Miami, I went to the University of Miami for undergrad and law school. And there I was helping to make sure that the foreign working corps had safer vertical housing. Um, then it was time to move back home to Jacksonville. And there I actually started working with a firm that did civil rights. And so, that put me in, um, very often with the city of Jacksonville on the other side, on a lot of cases. And so, we learned to work together on various issues, whether it was my public records request or, um, whether it had to do with the rights of citizens and making sure that they were enforced. Um, I'm licensed in Florida and Georgia. I also do quite a bit in the area of nonprofits. There was one point in time I was on twelve nonprofit boards at one time, which is crazy. But, that is where my heart is. And, um, many of those nonprofit boards were multi-county nonprofit boards. Some reached almost out to here, you know, they reached the Lake City area for sure. Um, but, um, I've also been appointed by the governor to the Florida Elections Commission, which enforces the election laws in chapter one oh four and one oh six. For the city of Jacksonville, I was appointed by the public defender as, um, a member of the Jacksonville Ethics Commission. So, I have many years' experience dealing with not only election laws, but ethic laws, um, dealing with the complaints that came before us, but also with recommendations for changes to legislation and how it should be enforced. Um, I have a passion for election law. My grandmother was the first woman and black elected to the Jacksonville City Council. And then she was the first African-American since Reconstruction elected to the Florida House of Representatives. She also served as the Florida Division of Election Supervisor. So, we're talking about, this was in the seventies, sixties and seventies. And so, that has always sort of been my passion about voting and election law. Um, so I've been heavily involved in election protection, um, as many of you all remember the two thousand election in Florida. If you aren't from here, I know. And so, for the last, um, almost twenty-four years, I've been very active in election protection and election law matters. Whether it was training poll watchers who monitor elections, uh, providing voter education. I sit in on canvassing boards and, um, actually make challenges, um, to certain decisions by the canvassing board. I've done it not only here in Florida, but I've actually even done it in, in Georgia when they had the recount or the Senate races. Um, and so, I've also represented candidates before, um, the canvassing board about their issues, as well as advising them when they have election law matters and complaints. I've sued other candidates or candidates for violating election law. Um, and then I've also consult with, and, and all of this is not, I don't get paid for any of this, just so you know. This is a passion. Um, but I also consult with community organizations who want to submit referendums to our charter here, you know, in Jacksonville. And how to work through that process, the language of the referendum, um, and making sure that it's gonna comply with the law. So, I, I've gotten extensive interest, even though my day-to-day practice is in personal injury. A lot of my practice that I do has to do with public service and issues that come before bodies like yourself. Um, in Jacksonville, um, many of the city council members actually will consult with me if they sometimes don't get the result from the general counsel to help them work through an issue that they, you know, want in their legislation. And so, um, I saw the opportunity, um, in an area where I'm very familiar. My grandparents' church was Mount Pleasant Missionary Baptist Church, just down the road, passed it on the way here. Been at the Springfield Community Centers more times than I can say. So, even though I'm from Jacksonville, this is very much in the backyard of my family. Um, and so, I have submitted my proposal. My proposal was for three twenty-five as an hourly rate in Jacksonville, um, which is a very different town. Uh, with twenty-six years plus experience, my rate is five hundred dollars, um, an hour. So, I discounted it, but I did put in there the five hundred just in case when I'm trying to go get my fee and they try to pull this up later and say, it's three twenty-five. No, it's five hundred. Um, expenses would be actual expenses. So, um, like if I'm doing any research and there's the actual costs, um, not, I'm not gonna do anything like for my copies and things of that nature. Uh, one, I just don't wanna keep track of it. But two, um, I, you know, that, those are nominal costs for me, um, and with my firm. And so, I, um, no retainer, it's included there. And if you have any questions for me, I, of course, um, present myself and I'm open to any questions that you have and for your consideration.
I like the, um, part about the elections, and we have a lot of sense and concern with the election, the previous election issues. So, I think that someone that's, um, knowledgeable on elections and ethics, because we get a lot of ethics. This is like, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it, just those two things alone, I mean, the other issues that we have, we really don't have any major issues besides elections and, and ethics, to be honest. Town is going pretty good.
Has a small thing coming up.
Well, look, you know, that insurance, you know, person. Exactly, exactly. Yeah.
Very great presentation.
Yes.
I don't have any, I mean, your, your, um, presentation as well as your resume speaks for it, so.
Thank you.
Is there, kids, you having?
Yeah, take my resume.
Thank you.
Mr. King, Mr. Wade, Charlie?
No, I, I was, I was great, I should have too.
Well, as you all know, we really need an attorney. Okay, um, the town has been functioning, we've been living a long. So, I'm asking for a motion to accept Miss Leslie Jimmy Bart's, um, proposal to become our attorney for the town of White Springs.
I make a motion to accept.
May I have a second?
I accuse a bird second in motion.
Any discussion?
When can you start?
This minute.
What do you mean?
Yes, yes, now I'm here to serve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, I'm looking forward to it.
So, we have another good thing.
That's another big one.
So, item C, Mr. Clay Swager, planner, could you please come?
There's another one.
We're moving along.
We are moving along.
Good evening, I am Mayor and council members, uh, my name's Clay Swager. And I am a certified land planner here in Florida. And my office is in Gainesville, uh, the company I work with is EDA. And firm's been around for forty-seven years. Uh, I've done a lot of work around North Florida. Um, I've got some great colleagues, I've got a, um, planning associate of mine named Lowell Garrett, who I know and spoke to the town manager a while back. And just to try to get some information, troubleshoot some city planning issues. Uh, Lowell was with the Regional Planning Council for, uh, three decades. And so, he really has a wealth of experience, um, working with local governments and assisting them any way possible. Um, I've been doing this for about twenty years. So, our firm, um, does public sector consulting, helping local governments, we also represent, um, private projects from time to time. So, we're really, we're pretty engrossed in, um, land planning issues in Florida. Um, we really enjoy helping smaller communities. Um, we've got several contracts where we, um, we provide services on an as-needed basis. Not here every day, of course, um, try to keep it very inexpensive and efficient. So, when your town manager, your clerk, um, calls and says, you know, there's an inquiry about a zoning issue, we can answer it right away. Um, you know, um, can this be done or can that be done? Um, you know, do we need to look at our land development regulations, try to update those and conference the plan? Uh, we can help you with all those things. And so, um, right now, we're working with, uh, town of Fort White, um, Waldo, and Hawthorne. Those would be the most comparable communities to, um, White Springs as far as what we do. Um, we answer the phone and manager calls, we, we give them the answers, we will go to meetings on occasion whenever needed. So, we really just try to keep it efficient, we just, we bill on an hourly basis, there's no overhead or any, um, additional costs for charges or copies or travel, anything like that. Um, so we'd like to be a resource to you if you'd like to have us. We're ready to start right away. Sounds like there's some things that you, you probably need some help with. And I've already started doing a little bit. Yeah, well, that's just an example of, um, of something we can do when you get a, uh, private application. Yeah, well, that's just an example of, um, of something we can do when you get a private application. We review it, make sure everything is up to code and that you've done everything the right way. And so, um, be happy to answer your questions, um, and thanks for the time and the opportunity to come tonight.
Hi, my name's Jackie, I'm your servant.
I will say that, um, Mrs. Swager, you know, just to see the subdivision. Um, with the subdivision, when they were giving us the, the booklets and everything, you said, just send it to me. They did the whole subdivision. All we had to do was look over and make sure it was agreeable to the council. They did. And it was, and I, when I tell you it was, it was under five hundred dollars, further than to do all the work with the zoning, with the thing. They looked at our land regulations. They sure it was within the town, everything. So I am, I am very pleased with their services. Like he said, when we call, they answer. If they're not, if they're out at lunch, they call us back. You know, I was just a little crazy, but they deal with her, you know.
So, Will, pleasure the council, I'll please have a motion to accept Mr. Clay Swager's proposal to become our planner.
I'm Kizzi Burke's motion that we accept Mr. Clay Swager as a planner.
Now, a second.
Second motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Two times.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Now we're at the bar for the council. Um, any council member have any comments?
Of course. Of course, um, as you all know, I'm doing my annual ice cream social. It'll be August tenth. This year will be eighteen years that I have been hosting it. Um, it's for back to school, it's Ice Cream Social and Back to School Bash. I'm still looking for donations, uh, food bags, ice cream supplies, whatever you can. It's the kids that count as to be successful. Um, I tell parents, I talk to parents all the time, you can't blame our kids for something we do. Just because another parent don't have something, that does not mean we as adults shouldn't step in. And so that is what basically my ice cream social is about, to make sure that our students have a successful school year. We supply that. Yes, ma'am.
Can we bring donations in and, and give it to Audrey?
They're not.
The time is closed. Um, you can take it
When you open.
You can take it to Country Vibe. The Black Bay, yes, ma'am. And, um, it's August tenth, eleven through two. I do have a motivational speaker that always come out. Um, this time, it's a personal favorite of mine. He's my nephew, um, bachelor, everything. And so I want you all to come out and support that as usual. Also, on August the twenty-fourth, Johnny Clarity is hosting a Black Bay Community Jubilee. It's got to be at the Black Bay Mini Park out on Twenty-Five Bay. Everything is free. He is seeking vendors, but you must be willing to donate whatever it is that you do. We want you to come out for, bring your time, bring your talent, bring your food, bring games. He looking for lighting, porta potties, whatever. It's just a big family community coming together to cook out.
You're saying they need porta potties?
Yes, ma'am. He looking for donations for any, anything, but he want everyone as a community just to come together. I do have his phone number if anyone would like it, but of course, you could reach out to me and I could get the message or whatever to him.
What's the best way to reach you?
Um, I could give you my phone number.
Okay.
I'm on Facebook. My page is public, but
It's under.
Kizzi Burke, but my phone number is three eight six, two three four, one one six two.
Say it again, three eight six?
Two three four, one one six two.
Thank you.
And of course, Ms. Tate, I want to say you're doing an awesome job with the kids at the camp. Um, they are loving it. We had some kids crying because they missed the, um, K, um, class yesterday. And one kid cried because, I'm going to say, part of town came out. Uh, Mel Williams came out to speak with the kids. They were excited to learn about the community and how they can help. Ms. Vanessa and Ms. Anita came out and they did jury making. And the next day, I didn't go that day. The next day I went, the little girl cried. She said, well, Ms. Kizzi, can we go to her house? I'm like, no, we can't go to her house. And she said, well, when is she coming back? I said, baby, they only come one time. She said, well, I didn't make my bracelet and I want to make my bracelet. But I tell you what, she gonna have to come back next year and I'm gonna make sure I'm here to make my bracelet. I shouldn't have went to the doctor. I'm like, no, baby, you had to go to the doctor. So with that being said, the program is very impactful. And we are dedicating our time, energy, money, thank the town also for what you all done. And if anyone want to come out and sit to see what we're learning, doing, you're more than welcome. Um, as far as volunteers, we do background checks. I'm sorry. I feel that if you're going to be surrounded by my children, other people's children, then that's just what it is. And I tell the kids all the time, I will not put anyone before you that I will not put before my children. And so with that being said, if someone want to come out to help, we're more, drop in waters or whatever it is that you may want to give, we're open to it. And Ms. Tate, I'm gonna say it again, thank you very much. I'll show you to Mr. Robbie.
Yes, yes, thank you. Anybody else in varsity?
I, I just want to say
I'll before you do.
Uh, I, I do want to, um, let everyone know that we've been looking for an attorney and a planner since November of twenty twenty-three. So I am so excited to have the attorney and the planner on board. Y'all just heard me say it. Questions that we can't really, you know, so I am, I'm, I'm happy to listen.
Well, I did promise my small citizens of White Springs that I will bring their ideas that they have from the camp, that I will bring them before the council, just something for us to think about, um, and we can facilitate their request, I hope. So the ideas from the children, one was they would like a water park, town manager. And we're working on that.
Actually, yeah, I brought it up with Vanessa a while back and asked her, she been looking to get a grant for, um, flashbacks, like of the town. And so she had someone that's trying to work on the grant for that.
So I did share that part with them. That, that was something that was in the making.
We had another little citizen, he wants his roads fixed.
Roads?
Roads.
We had another citizen who wanted a community day. So I didn't ever know that we are working on the community day, um, where your town manager would actually give us a date.
I'm just
And the buyer department, so they're, because they're going to work collaboratively together. Um, another citizen wants an arcade. We had one, um, we had one young lady, she wants to continue the community cleanups. So she would like for those to be scheduled. And then last but not least, they would like a movie day. So I really feel like the things that were on their list are doable. And I really was impressed, especially with the roads, the pieces of the roads. That was impromptu, I mean, I went around the room and that is what was saving. So that I did promise them that I would bring it to the meeting. Um, that's first thing. Again, thank you, Ms. Tate, for having me out there. I enjoyed it. And I do have high impacts for the kids. I would drop them off for them. Um, second thing, our meetings, we, we try to have a very informal, formal meeting. When you're asking to speak, please respect others. Please limit your conversations during the meeting so everyone can hear. Um, don't blur out. Please wait till you're acknowledged, come up to the podium when asked. Just let this through a decent order, please. Um, I just, I want to hear from everybody. I want everybody to hear what everybody is saying. So please let's take in mind, you know, just keep in mind that we are all here for the same goal and let's just be respectful of one another. With that being said, if no one else has anything to say, I would like to adjourn the meeting at, at eight ten P M. And thank you.